Welcome to the 5:30 council work session. What day is today, September 24th, 2018? Our first item is committee reports on items of interest. Does anybody have anything they wish to comment on? Jennifer, take it away. Betty?
Yeah, I'm wondering if we can explore the possibility of getting our packets earlier? Because it's two business days and I'm finding that really difficult. I'm sure I'm not the first person to say this, but I don't know. Maybe on a break, we can get a week ahead. I don't know if that's even possible, but maybe just looking into it.
We are working on that. That was something that we brought up in the process session. And it may be that sometimes AIS still comes with a regular packet. But we have packets like you guys received this weekend. We're going to do our best to try to get materials out in advance as much as we possibly can. So we're working with the departments to change a little bit of that process timeline.
That is fantastic. Thank you.
Betty?
The planters down near the bus station. The flowers are pretty, but the planters are really ugly, those that look like garbage cans. And I think they were put there to keep people from being there. But I think it would be better to put in some seats and let people be there and sit down.
Do you want to comment on that?
The one thing I would say is that some of what you're talking about, I think it's a personal preference when some people really like those. So we get compliments on both, and so I understand that.
Those tin can things, you get compliments?
Yeah, we do. It's a style thing. But one of the reasons, just want to remind you that not only really the primary purpose is that we want to make sure that people, the buses have a hard time getting around that corner when people are kind of too close to the street. And so it's actually a safety mechanism.
Well, I was thinking if you gave them a place to sit, they might sit down instead of standing. It'd be nice if there were chairs there that people could...
We are working on getting some more benches downtown, too.
I heard that, but chairs would be nice, too, because people could make their own groups in. Thank you.
Claire?
Thank you. So some folks may have seen a opinion piece by the Register Guard over the weekend praising Springfield's efforts to expand their car camping program, which was great. But I actually sent in a letter to the editor in response because I did not feel they framed the issue correctly and implied that Eugene was frozen in our efforts. And in fact, we had pioneered the car camping program, which has been around for many years, as well as Opportunity and Emerald Villages, which the editors pointed to as great programs. So I attempted to set the record straight. I don't know if they'll publish my letter, but I just wanted to make sure that the citizens of Eugene were acknowledged and recognized for efforts they have made to address this crisis, acknowledging that there is much more to do. And it was great to see Springfield expand their car camping program. And related to that, I happened to read the community-supported shelters newsletter over the weekend, and they run two of our rest stops, I believe it's two. And there was a great story about basically in the aftermath of Santa Clara residents reacting very, many of them reacting negatively to LTD's proposal to put two car camping sites on land that they're not going to use for a number of years. The Messiah Lutheran Church, where that contentious meeting took place, has now two Conestoga huts, and they are housing two women, I believe in their 50s and 60s there, and making them welcome in the neighborhood. And I just really wanted to appreciate that something positive came out of what was, for many folks, a pretty negative experience and want to thank the church for their quiet work to help these two women get off the street into safe shelter.
That is great. That is great news. Any, yes, Emily, go for it.
I'd like to add to Claire's comments that we approved $60,000 in our budget for car camping this year. So that's a pretty big vote for it. Sustainability Commission and Human Rights Commission met last week, and both are working diligently on their work plans for the year. So it'd be some good work coming from both of them. Still a little concerned about downtown. It's sunny, there's a lot of people. Emails continue about people not feeling safe in all different parts. I hear there may be some ideas coming forth, so I'm really looking forward to us continuing our efforts to both increase the vitality of our merchants and businesses and take care of our vulnerable people as well as our visitors. So thank you for the future.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick notes here. Mike has just had to step away for a little family emergency. Councilor Greg will not be here today, so I'm going to make an announcement on his behalf. And Alan is in Detroit and will be phoning in. So that's where the rest of the crew is. On Councilor Evans' behalf, just a reminder that this end of this week is the League of Oregon Cities Conference, and we're hosting it. So it should be interesting and robust. There are a couple of councils, a couple of workshops on homelessness. There are some really great tours of our rest stops and our bike shares, Peace Health Bike Shares, and a community justice workshop. So it should be good outreach. And then I just want to mention that last, we're kind of losing track of time, yes, no, two weeks ago, the 12th, attended the first of four workshops on housing tools and strategies. You'll all recall this was an outgrowth of our initial conversation on a construction excise tax and how we could overcome some barriers to creating affordable housing. So there are 34 folks sitting in those workshops. They're going to four workshops. It was a very robust conversation. The first round was to talk about problems around both the kinds of issues that get in the way of housing and also the people that struggle the most with housing. And it's a very diverse group. I think, I think the staff did actually a great job at doing some outreach. And so it's quite a mix of folks who have been around this issue for a long, long time and very well-versed in it and probably a little tired of talking about it. And those folks who are new to the table and eager to learn and ready to engage. So we know the hope is that the sort of experienced folks and the new folks will be a good blending of new ideas tempered with, you know, some wisdom from experience. They have three more meetings to go, October 4th, November 14th, and November 28th. And so the next three will be kind of the critical piece where they really start to talk about what are some of the tools we could use, what do we need to modify or implement anew in order to try and overcome the problems that were identified in the first meeting. And this is all in anticipation and preparation of a council work session on December 10th. So it is moving forward. I'm planning to go to all four. I found it really, really interesting. I would encourage any of you who are free on those dates to go and encourage members of the public. These are open meetings. There's plenty of room for the audience to sit and listen, and they're also available on the website as a webcast. So you can also track it if you can't attend the meeting. So just a reminder that that work is going on. And now we are ready for our first item of business, the civilian review board and police auditors official annual reports.
I'll start. I think I know everybody. And I'm going to start with that because eight years ago, I was chairing the Police Commission and brought to council the recommendation of the Police Commission to create the auditor's office and the civilian review board.
Could you just introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So people know.
Other people know. I'm Maury Danner, and I am the Chair of the Civilian Review Board.
Thank you.
You're welcome. When I delivered that message, I delivered it, it was a unanimous recommendation from the Police Commission, but there was a certain amount of skepticism, at least on my part, and I think on a couple of other people, that we had a lot of work to do. What I see now as, four years into my term on the review board, is that there's some really good work going on, and it's more successful than I had ever anticipated. And I really appreciate what Mark and Leah and Vicki and their staff have brought to the table, because that's part of what's made it successful. Technology has improved the work. We now have in-car video and body worn cameras. And I will tell you this about the review board members. If I'm reviewing a case and have the available time, I will watch the event unfold in video and both the audio part two. And we have people on the street who are doing wonderful work, don't always get headlines, but you can see some of their commendations if you go to the city website under slash 2763 commendations. And I would encourage council and members of the audience, take a look there sometime because every once in a while, the public will chime in with a compliment about one of our employees. That's really important. The review board has looked at probably at 15 or 16 cases during 2017. We had one night when we looked at nothing but service complaints, and there were four, five of those. In looking at those, I tried to glean out what seemed important to the review board, starting with professional conduct and training. And some of that is a matter of time, having the time to do everything exactly right. The other is a matter of call loads and knowing that people on the street are trying to do their job, trying to cover and protect each other, and that there are other calls holding that need to be responded to. And I think it leads to errors of omission. The second thing we've talked about in the review board is clarity of expectations, making sure that the public knows what the officers are going to do, making sure that the officers know exactly what they're going to do. That's a bit of a training issue, and it's always a supervision issue. And part of what I think I see as somebody who's done a little work with quality improvement is that we're going so fast that supervisors and experienced officers don't always have time to go back over the ground that maybe needs to be gone over. There's a movement in some jurisdictions called, that's being referred to as mindfulness. And it's creating a training program that makes employees think about their day before it starts. And it does seem to be creating some results in jurisdictions that are as stressed as we are and in some jurisdictions where the level of violent conduct is much higher than it is in Eugene and in Lane County. And I would encourage and will encourage the department to continue to look at that kind of strategy. On more than one occasion, and I tried to think of an example that supports the notion that we need to be more thoughtful, officers have left females alone after the perpetrator of domestic violence has been taken from the scene, but without any support. And it just doesn't seem right. There is almost an automatic custody in a domestic violence case of the perpetrator, but you can't be leaving, and it doesn't necessarily matter that it's female, you can't leave the victim unsupported. I don't know how we're going to get to that. I don't know if that's something we should look to cahoots to provide, but certainly to encourage the victim to contact someone that helps them feel safe. There are issues that continue to emerge around communications, and by that I mean the 911 operators. The auditor and the review board don't have authority to review allegations against those employees. They're non-sworn, and they're not a part of the agreement. I think the council needs to look towards the future and think about a way to include the non-sworn employees under the review process. I think it'd be helpful. Again, it's a mindfulness thing. We're not going to discipline anybody as a review board, but we are going to look at what happened, and we're going to provide feedback. I'm going to come back to that in a second. The other thing, and I just made a quick note, the investigation of officer-involved shooting rules were assigned by the state to the counties, and we have an agreement with the county for how that happens. Fortunately, we have not had a critical shooting in a good, long time. However, the quality of the last major investigation was less than satisfactory. We need to find a way to have the very best investigators from whichever agency they might be available from to do the primary on those investigations. Right now in Lane County, we're using, and I don't mean to criticize another agency, but we're using highway patrol officers to do those investigations. And that really jumped out at us a year and a half ago. Back to the 911, the heavy call load and the intensity of those calls certainly is an issue. And one of the errors, or two of the errors that have occurred involved misdirecting of Simple confusion, Washington Park up above 18th, Washington Jefferson Park down below 6th Avenue. How we get that level of competence achieved is a critical question. The other one that struck me as significant, we had a 911 call for assistance with a possibly suicidal subject with a weapon that we were not able to respond to promptly. The notion that in somebody's restaurant, there was a person locked in a restroom who might have had a weapon, and we couldn't get anyone there is a combination of errors that needs to be addressed. It's recognizing the seriousness of the call, and in this case, there were three calls, that's right, and just didn't process correctly. The last couple of points I want to make, and then I'll give the time over to Mark. I looked at as the Chair, the evaluations that were submitted by the review board for the auditor and his staff, and I have five points. One, all of the comments exceeded expectations. It's clear that Mark's billed a very effective office and that the people on the review board recognize that. There's an atmosphere of teamwork that's evident. Community outreach with the addition of Beatrice has made a stretch into the community that we need to keep going. And the relationships with his staff, between his staff, with the police department, with the review board, and the union are excellent. We had the union in for a meeting last year and had a nice exchange with the head of the union. I had a chance to talk about their perception of the review board and for us to ask some good questions. Leadership is, is the last comment I made, is that they're doing a good job. So what do I see as the future? I mentioned the expansion of the authority of the review board or the auditor to look at non-sworn employees. I think creating a funding mechanism to get the city more fully funded than we are now for putting people on the street and giving them the supervision and the training that they need. I know the chief is working on creating a set of expectations. They were in the PERF report last year. We need to create high expectations. We need to communicate them to the staff, and then we need to follow up and make sure we train to them and review them often. The public in general, people, don't understand use of force. They see it in make-believe on television, and it's graphically portrayed. They read about it in the newspaper, and it sounds tragic. And they see the nightly news, and the nightly news has, and I don't think they completely do it sensationally, but they do it very sensationally. So the public does not understand the perspective of an officer responding to an armed subject or a situation where life or lives may be threatened. And somehow, we need to get in the back of our own minds as a review board and a mechanism to clarify that, because we are asking people to go into a life or death situation, and we're asking them to do a job as safely as possible with both their own safety and the safety of everybody else in that situation. And that's a mindfulness thing. That's keeping yourself safe, and it's protecting the public. And we just, we need to do that. The department has worked through court on responses to mental health and physical conditions. We've put cahoots out on the street in a more effective way, I think. We need to keep working in that area. One of the things we did, and this wasn't part of 2017, we did it last month, was we had a presentation to the review board on autism, because autism is not mental illness and it doesn't act that way. And that's a training that's needed. And finally, I'm sure I said this eight years ago, we need to reach out to the public and tell the public what a good job our police department is doing. We need to sell it. Thank you all. And questions now, or do you want to?
We can open for questions now if I, if folks, and or maybe we could go to Mark first and then do questions? That make sense?
Whatever you like, because he's with the review board, so I wanted to make sure that you have an opportunity to bifurcate both the presentation, if you have any questions, but I'm ready to go forward if you like, if that'll be easier for you. I want to thank everybody for being here and giving us the time and attention that you do. I appreciate that you listen. I really appreciated the performance review from July as I have passed. Those are really about the team that we have and the staff that we have and the great work done by the review board. We have a really great review board now. And I wondered at the time, and I had four lawyers, which was majority, and I'm not a lawyer. I have a good one on staff, so I wondered about that. And they've been great, and they always do their good, good work before we get there. And everyday great work by the staff. I've kind of noticed in the last year, year and a half, though, I think it was a tough year for us, because I think that conditions have changed. It seems that our contacts, more and more, are people with mental health issues, neurological disorders, drug abuse issues because the near-decriminalization of possession of some of the Schedule I substances. And we're not trained psychologists, and so it is stressful at times when people come in. And then the other part of that is because of the previously stated almost 40% lack of response on calls or the timeliness of calls, that people have a certain level of expectation when they call for police services. And when those expectations aren't met, at best, they're dissatisfied; at worst, they're very angry. And oftentimes, we have to deal with that too often, which I think is more than once the default is, well, if you're not happy, call the auditor's office. And of course, they do, instead of trying to work better on that first, on that front line of customer service. And the chief and I have had that discussion. He's only been here four or five months, so I know he does appreciate that. I wanted to correct Maury. Our office has jurisdiction over non-sworn employees. We just can't push it out to the public, the civilian review board. And I think that, you know, there's sort of an inverse relationship between trust and transparency, and we try to keep that trust, but I also recognize that without a vigorous public records law, that makes it difficult at times. We also spend, I think, extra work for process mistakes and missteps, where if an organization is following the process the way they're supposed to follow the process each and every time, then we wouldn't have to intervene in some of these issues. And I hope that down the line, that those things can improve. And we provide what I probably consider, quite honestly, maybe a little too much counsel and guidance to middle managers and above at the police department because of their trepidation about bringing it up the ladder and not knowing what outcome might come of that. So again, I'm hopeful with the new administration that they'll develop a more team approach to some of the problems that they have to deal with. I'll agree with Maury. This is a kinder, gentler police department than it was nine years ago. And I see that on film every day. Many of the allegations now are internally generated, and there's a high volume of service-related complaints. The body worn cameras have been really helpful. It sort of pushes a lot of this back to me because I get a complaint, and I don't want to push forward an allegation against an officer if I have an opportunity to watch the audio and video. And in almost every instance, the officers are, quite honestly, polite and courteous in the face of intolerance of the police activity that they are a part of. Again, we still get a high volume of service-related complaints that I dismiss a lot, and then people sort of channel that towards our office instead of channeling it towards a police sergeant. Because of a lot of these improvements, they only had, they only had... Because of a lot of these improvements, they only need one internal affairs sergeant. They used to have two internal affairs sergeants. So, I think that the extra work that we're doing in reviewing these cases allows for one more sergeant on the street, I hope. And we've really worked hard on community outreach. I was just telling councilors Clark and Taylor on last Tuesday that I think we have, we had seven community council meetings and we're now up to 10, packed in pretty tight. We have more social media. We're doing a lot of work with the Latinx community. As Maury stated, we have a couple of things in the works. I was moved by neurological discussion when I went to a conference last year. And so, we've really pushed forward that issue, especially on the autism presentation. And Ms. Raitz, the executive director of Autism of Oregon, is a fabulous speaker and she has two sons who have autism. And just to sort of listen to her relate to that. And our newest project that Beatrice is working on and we've talked about for the last several weeks is there's still tremendous amount of fear in the community, particularly of the Latinx community, about ICE and other things. And one of the things that people don't understand is, and I'm certain that a lot of crime is under-reported, or crime is under-reported, is what happens if you do call the police? Say, for example, someone throws a big rock through your front window and you call the police. What happens with that paperwork? Where does it go? Who has access to it? Who's going to look at it? And so, Beatrice is now working with records. I don't really know, quite frankly. Beatrice is working with records to take that step-by-step process through and then we'll have a community formed for people to find out what happens with that paperwork. Because I think the least we can do is like tell them the truth. I don't know where it goes. I don't know who has access to it. And so, if people at least know what happens with that paperwork, maybe that'll give them a better understanding of when they do report a crime. And I know the chief has been working and will be speaking next month at the Immigration Network also to talk about some of those issues because there is a tremendous, a lot of, tremendous amount of fear out there. And so, if we can be catalysts to belay some of those fears, we'll do that. With the new chief, I don't get many opportunities to meet with him because he's really busy. But when we do meet, I think it's very productive. Another issue that has, that we're working on right now is we're doing a study of profiling complaints and we don't get a lot. I think last year, we had 17. I know people, there's more people that feel like they were profiled than that. But at least preliminarily, we're not seeing a pattern of officers. And out of 17 of those complaints, only three were officer-initiated. So, in other words, the other 14, they were just responding to calls and it's a person of color at the call that they're responding to. It certainly goes beyond that in terms of decision-making, but we're looking at that. And then we continue on a daily basis to review use of force complaints. And I'm happy to report that leadership at EPD are also looking at use of force entries into a software program called Blue Team. So, you know, I could talk for hours about this thing. Again, I want to thank you for your time and your energy for all that you do for our community. I was just saying that to Leah today. Y'all are just amazing for the amount of time and effort that you put in our communities. And I'm sure with email now in Texas, it's maybe not as friendly as the handwritten letter once was or took as much time, so it's easier as well. So, I want to thank you all and I'll segue over to Leah because she's got a slide presentation for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, these are figures that are in the report, but just sort of to highlight a bit, first would be our community outreach efforts. These are headed by Beatrice. She's been amazing. We did an anonymous survey. The Public Safety Forum was a big hit. We had a really good turnout for that and it was, I really enjoyed going there even though I, my bilingual skills were not quite up to par. But, but yes, so we've been doing lots. We also, I noted in the report, we had an increase in walk-in traffic last year and I don't know, we had increased signage, new signage above our building, which I know many acquaintances of mine have commented on. Apparently, no one knew where I worked. But here are an overview of complaints. We did have a decrease overall in complaints last year of 11%. Slight decrease in how many were classified as allegations of misconduct. Mostly, it was service complaints. They were down 20%. And also respectful work environments. We had had seven, I believe, in 2016 and only one in 2017. That got messed up, but at least I think it's right in your handout. So, I'll move on to the next one because it's embarrassing. But just wanted to point out, so there were, of those 22 investigations into allegations of misconduct, there were 41 specific allegations against 28 employees. 18 of those allegations were sustained for 44% rate and those were sustained against 12 employees. Only half of those were sworn employees, is sort of what we were thinking about earlier. We did investigate all sworn and non-sworn, but about half of those, we couldn't send to the CRB. The sustained allegations were mostly performance-based, just people, officers not meeting the expectations that are set for them. And then there were like, I think, three sustained courtesy complaints where we, fortunately, with video, that helps a lot, you can really get a feel for the situation and hear exactly what the words that are being spoken are spoken. So, those 18 sustained allegations resulted in that, those methods of discipline. And then the majority of our complaints are service complaints. The majority of those are performance complaints. Those go to the employee supervisor. They're sort of the lowest level. They're minor misconduct. And yeah, again, it's performance and courtesy. I think this, in my opinion, has a lot to do with call load and all that stuff that everyone else has so eloquently spoken of. So, that's what I have for you. And now, we can all take questions.
That's, that's great. I just want to start out by thanking you all. I think, at least for me, and I assume for most of the members of the public, that there's so much about police work and what happens on a day-to-day basis that is absolutely opaque to me. I have no idea, really, how it works, what the day feels like, how they prepare themselves, how they talk themselves down from a challenging situation. So, I really appreciate the report of the CRB and sort of clarifying how you would characterize some of those pieces. And so, thank you for how thorough that was. And the same thing for the auditor's office. I think it's just sort of extraordinary what you're able to share with us about how that's working and where those pressure points are. So, really appreciate the amount of clarity and transparency that you are providing to us as a community so that we can see where we need to make improvements and what we should do next. So, thank you very much for that work. And I am going to turn it over to Claire.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the report and excellent work. Maury, you mentioned eight years ago, being the chair of the Police Commission. And at that time, I worked for the ACLU of Oregon and was attending those meetings and following the developments around this office very closely. And I'm pleased to have you in the chairmanship now of the civilian review board and really want to appreciate your service in the roles that you've played. Mark, I recall when you were brought in to serve, you were one of the few police auditors in the country. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
I think the model that we have and the model that I came from is rarer than the other models.
Yeah.
That's true.
And have you seen other jurisdictions adopt the kind of model that we've been using since you've been with us?
Modestly. I think we're looked upon probably as one of the strongest ones, both with the auditor and having the review board. And we're often consulted about that and at times surprise people for the depth of penetration that we have probably in the police department. And I think just from an improvement standpoint, not from a confrontational standpoint.
Right.
So, I think it's a model that people look at. They have concerns about cost, but I think when you break it down, and I've said it before, we cost less than one cent per day, per capita for the people in this community. And I think that that's a benefit. I can't prove a negative in terms of how that might have impacted officer conduct, which might impact financial costs to the cities down the road. But I think that we have steered the culture towards more compassion and more kindness and more gentleness than when I first got here.
And I think you've helped with, working with Chief Kearns and now, I'm assuming, Chief Skinner helped the police department, I think, be more accepting of this level of scrutiny from an independent office. And so, I think that independence of your office, combined with the civilian review board, makes for a very powerful oversight regime. And I think it's more than just financially worthwhile. It's worthwhile in terms of community trust and the, you know, good policy work that you've helped foster also in your time. And I want to appreciate a couple of things. I really appreciate what you talked about just at the end there about your office's efforts to look into where do these police reports go and who's going to have access to them? Because I think it's more important now than it's ever been to keep the confidence of, especially our Latino community, to be able to call the police when they are victims of crime because we want those perpetrators to be brought to justice. And I also think it's a real sign of maturity of this board that you were able to invite the union leadership to sit down and have a discussion. Because when we were trying to form the board, the union leadership at the time was offered a seat at the table and left the table during those discussions. So, everyone's come a long way and I think the results show in terms of the great work of our police department as well as the great work of your office. And so, just a couple of questions, or one question, actually, and that's around investigations. So, Maury mentioned concerns about the level of professionalism and how well our investigations are conducted. Is it required that we use another state agency for certain investigations? Or would we be able to hire our own investigators or go about it a different way than we're doing now?
Well, the state has a model, has, years ago dictated a model for officer-involved shooting cases. And one was developed for Lane County. They're different depending on what county, but they all have to get the endorsement of the attorney general. I think, and I've stated it often, I think by design, it's flawed for Eugene because we have my office. And I think that it also, we're blessed that they're very rare and we're cursed that they're very rare. So, the fact that they only get together about once a year to do these type of investigations, then it's not going to be as smooth as the place where I came from where we were pretty much a well-oiled machine because we had about one shooting a month minimum. So, that's part of the issue as well. But I just think that from a collaborative standpoint, when you have people from all different agencies gathering information and trying to centralize that information without even daily or hourly communication about how that goes on, I find that a little disconcerting because I'm worried about that time when there's, that we have an officer-involved shooting, that's not going to look good. And, and I went back to process and because the process is not perfect, because I think the process should always be perfect, that may, you know, that may be a problem for future organizations or groups. So, and again, that's an opinion. I know that there's law enforcement agencies in the county that disagree with my opinion about that and that's fine. But I still have that fear that when there is a controversial one, that we're not, that people will criticize the process more than the decisions.
Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to apologize to all three of you for having to get up and leave for most of that presentation. I had an emergency at home that needed to be taken care of and I'm sorry about that. The upside is, in my role as president of council, I get to meet regularly with Mark, so I'm reasonably well up to speed on a lot of this already, getting a chance to meet every month at least. I know, and looking at some of this information in the presentation here, that service complaints are the number one category of complaints that you receive. Would it be fair to categorize that? And I want to be careful about this. Would it be fair to categorize that and say that a lot of times, if not most of the times, that's the public's perception of what should happen when they call the police and the level of service that our community provides matched up against the reality of what our resources allow the police to do? Would you say that's accurate?
Yeah, I think to some degree, there's certainly that front-end customer service, but I look, there's some agencies that get together and compile all their information and our response times for some of the higher priority things aren't way off the grid. They're within a reasonable amount of time. Most often, police are very reactive. And whether it takes them five minutes to get there for burglary or 30 minutes for burglary, it's already happened and the thieves are gone. And so, I think, I hope, one of the components of this new initiative is to make more vigorous the cooperation among neighbors to look out for each other and be more preventative in terms of crimes. Because police will respond to calls, but the activity has already more than likely occurred.
Right. Well, in our conversations, that's one of the themes that I've kind of heard a few times. And I want to make sure that I'm not saying our police have room to grow in efficiency and skill there as much as I think, as we will talk about on Wednesday. We have, as a council, room to help build the police forces, resources in order to be more robust in their response to things and to be quicker because they have more officers and all those things. And we'll talk about that. I also want to say thank you for all of the service, Maury, for your work with CRB and for all of the other folks there and for all of your staff that works at this so hard. And one of the things after nine years on the Police Commission that I always appreciated is that I have heard other people make recommendations around policy issues, which is a minor part of the function there. But they were always worked with so well and communicated with so well with the department and integrated so well. And I appreciate that Chief Skinner's in the room with us tonight, too, and here to hear all of the feedback and take that into account. And I know he has that same kind of spirit to make the best department. So, I'm hopeful and glad that the two of you will continue to communicate closely, as has always been the case, in order to make sure that those policy ideas can flow through freely. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you. Really great and thoughtful presentation. I really appreciate what everybody had to say. Maury talked about the staffing and the challenges to staffing and the response rate and that really is a resource issue. And that's where the nexus of this conversation today and the one we'll have on Wednesday, I think, really begins to shape itself, is that we, this is the year where we really come to understand that we're in a critical situation around public safety and we can't just talk about it. We have to start doing things. And you're kind of beginning elements of that with how do you create the environment in which that can happen? And for me, the word that I keep coming back to is the culture of the police department that matches the culture of Eugene and how you can make those two cultures align. And for me, one of the real purposes of creating an auditor's office and why I was supportive of it in the first place was not just to catch bad guys in the police department, was to really shape and change the culture of the police department so it was a good match for the culture of Eugene. And as you've said, I think that's exactly what is happening. And I don't want to just call it a kinder, gentler police department because that's because that sounds as if it's a weaker police department. But it's not. A kinder, gentler police department actually can be a stronger police department. And the reason for that is, gets back to your notion of expectations of response. What should a response look like and should a response occur and who does it? And I think that really gets to a theme I've talked about many times before, which is engagement, which is not just communicating with the public and making them aware, but they actually become committed to what you're doing and they're willing to support it. That's relevant to the conversation on Wednesday as well. And how do you create that engagement? And I think part of the way you do that is through the culture of the organization and its relationship to the culture of the community. And I think you and the new chief are getting that and working very hard to create a culture within the police department that matches the culture within the community. And that's a good start, a good basis for where engagement can concern, can begin. And we've talked before about our police officers, should they view themselves as warriors or should they view themselves as guardians? And I think, how can I be engaged? What is the nature of my engagement with a warrior? What is the nature of my engagement with a guardian? I think there's even another additional level, which is a partner. Because if you think about the cop who used to watch the, walk the beat 40 years ago, 50 years ago, 60 years ago, you didn't view him as a warrior. You didn't view him even necessarily as a guardian. You viewed him as your partner. That was the person walking down the street who knew your business, knew your kids, knew what you were doing. And when we keep talking about community policing, it's really a stand-in for the notion of how can we build partnerships between our police department and our people? And that's, to me, where engagement really comes from. And when we want to start building the kind of commitment we need to generate the resources we need and the support we need, I think it's to go beyond the warrior and the guardian and to say, how can we be partners, strong partners? Because we don't want to look like we can't do the job. But, and this is where the body-worn cameras and the in-car videos demonstrate that we are trying to be partners with the community even as we try to provide those same guardian services. And I think getting that mix is how we're going to be able to get the resources we need.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, well, that's a lot of work for a few comments from us. But I think, but I think the work speaks for itself and was well presented. And I really appreciate what both the auditor's office and the civilian review board bring to our community. So thank you very, very much for that report. And we'll carry on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So before, oh, you know, I don't, I guess Alan didn't want to chime in before I've sent everyone away. Guess he's missed his chance. We do have an additional topic, which you may have found on your table. And so I'll turn that over to Kristi.
Do you want to take action on the street name change first?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping, aren't I?
That's okay.
Sorry, I didn't look at my.
That requires a move.
We have an action item.
Yes, I jumped right to the next thing before going to the street name change. Yes, so let's talk about the official item here.
Yeah, no problem at all. So this item is scheduled for action tonight concerning a land use application for a street name change for the portion of Suzanne Way, which extends north of Crescent Drive to Tennyson Avenue. The request was submitted by Living Strong LLC. During the city council public hearing on September 10th, 2018, Teresa Bishow, on behalf of the applicant, testified in favor of the proposed street name change. The record was closed immediately following the public hearing. The only testimony received to date is one letter of support from the Northeast Neighbors for the street name change. The Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of the street name change on July 10th, 2018. And tonight, you'll have an opportunity to take action. I believe Nick is here. Oh, great, awesome. Do you want to come on up? To answer any questions if you have.
Okay, we want to put this on the table and then ask questions?
Yes, Mayor. I move to adopt Council Bill 5198 in ordinance changing the street name of the undeveloped portion of Suzanne Way to Tennyson Avenue as it extends north from Crescent Avenue to Tennyson Avenue.
Second. Okay. Questions, comments? No, I think it's all quite clear to everybody. Ready to vote? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six? I don't think Alan is on, he's not here to vote. So I think it passes. None opposed. Thank you very much.
That was easy.
That was a lot of, that was also a lot of work without much comment or process. But that's usually a good sign.
Thanks, Maury.
And now we're ready.
And now we're ready for the surprise agenda item.
I'd like to introduce Randy Bowers-Payne. She's our Risk and Benefits Manager. And she's here tonight to give us an update on our emergency management program.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, as Kristi mentioned, I am here to highlight some of the activities that have gone on as part of September National Preparedness Month. In addition to that, to highlight to you the ongoing work that emergency management does year-round to prepare us for all hazards, of course, including Cascadia. So September, as I mentioned, offers a great opportunity to highlight that work. And I just want to also highlight the ongoing work with this video presentation that emergency management prepared a few years ago. So the content is still relevant, but you may see that some of the faces have changed in emergency management. So I'm just going to start the foundation of tonight's discussion with this emergency management video.
Yes.
That's a nice way of saying some of us is older.
The City of Eugene wants to be prepared in the event of natural or man-made disasters. Eugene's emergency management staff work year-round to ensure the city and its partners are ready to face those disasters with an effective, efficient, and coordinated response.
As the emergency manager for the City of Eugene, I'm tasked with making sure that we're prepared for catastrophic-type emergencies and events. My role in emergency management is to make sure that the people who work for me help support that mission. In order to do that, we have to come together on a lot of different fronts.
I'm a fire captain with the Eugene Springfield Fire, and I've been on loan for about a year working with emergency management for the City of Eugene. My position is emergency management analyst. And as part of that position, I've been working on emergency operations plan. And that is basically documents that support large operations, emergencies, things like earthquakes and tornadoes and ice storms. And I've also been working on developing exercise. Emergencies like earthquakes don't occur often. And so we have to be ready at a moment's notice for a major event like that. And to prepare for that, we do exercises or drills, if you will. And these can be very involved and involve a lot of people and a lot of planning. And the idea is that we would be ready at a moment's notice to stand up an emergency operations center or an EOC and manage the incident above what I normally would see in the fire department. As a fire captain, I'm used to responding to incidents and dealing with problems. And they might be large enough problems, but they tend to be resolved just by the police and fire. As an emergency management side, my view has changed in that I see how important it is to coordinate all these different entities to fix larger problems such as an earthquake. There's public works, there's police and fire, but there's also utilities. There's a policy group that is involved in making decisions on how to spend money. And that coordination is what the EOC does. And that's a really important part of what we do.
One of the ways that we hone our skills, test our skills, and build our skills or our experiences is by working with our partners in the community. And the City of Springfield, the University of Oregon, and Lane County are some of our emergency management partners that we work with on special events or actual events. If there's a winter weather situation or if there's an impact on our resources, then we can go or we would go and help support them in their mission. And they would also come help support us in our mission.
From my perspective, having worked on these kinds of things for a long time, it's been nice to see this get to a point within our communities that is really effective and it's a useful tool. I think that's one of the things that the City of Eugene's done well, is see that need and recognize how important it is that we don't work in siloed departments of police, fire, and public works, but we actually bring the whole, the whole community, our whole city effort into responding to large, significant events.
Part of my job, my responsibilities is public outreach and bringing tools and resources to our community to help them become more prepared or disaster resilient. Because in doing that, I'm helping them become part of the solution rather than part of the problem in the face of a catastrophic disaster. First responders will already be overwhelmed. In recent events, Hurricane Katrina and Hurricane Sandy were fine examples of when first responders were not able to go to work to do their job. We have a lot of tools or a lot of programs that we provide to the community. And that includes the CERT program, the Community Emergency Response Team program. And Map Your Neighborhood is another one. The Five-Step Neighborhood Disaster Planning. And that's a tool that helps them build disaster plans within their neighborhood and helps them as a group come together and talk about ways they can be more prepared in their neighborhood.
So one of the things that really gives me a lot of comfort is knowing that the City of Eugene supports this emergency management program and that it's important to them. Not only because they've brought on professional help and given staff assignments to specifically work with emergency management to make sure we're better prepared, but a lot of the people that come and help us on an ad hoc basis to run our EOC and things like that, and our staff are working very hard to be prepared at home so that they can be available should we have a disaster here in the city.
On the personal level, I have to be prepared for really any circumstances. So I need to make sure that my home and my family are prepared with, you know, all the supplies that they need from drinking water to food to backup power, if that's necessary, so that when we have a seismic event, I'm able to step away from that and move into an EOC and be able to function and not be worrying about what's happening at home.
When we get into, involved in a large-scale disasters or emergencies, things like that, they're going to go for extended periods of time. It's important we've thought that through and so that we understand what it means to us, what we can expect. So we have some understanding of what we need to do and where we need to go with it. As we start to work down those paths to understand what it is we need to do, it's very important to the City of Eugene and the people that live here that we're effective when we need to be. And I'm not talking necessarily about the daily activities that go on at the police or fire departments. I'm talking about the bigger things that affect all the departments across the city and how we can come together and make considerable effort in supporting our community, the people that are here, helping them survive some of the most trying times that they will probably ever experience in their lives.
For more information on how you can be prepared in the event of an emergency, go to eugene-or.gov/emergency-management.
So as you can see, there is work going on year-round to prepare for whatever hazard may face the City of Eugene. But as I indicated, September provides an excellent opportunity for us to highlight preparedness efforts that our staff and the community can undertake. And so in front of you tonight, you have a few resources. There is a brochure asking you to purchase or supply your own emergency go-kit. And as Matt McCray indicated in the video, that's really important to ensuring that we get the city back to operations. If you and your family are not prepared or if our staff and their families are not prepared, they are not going to be able to quickly return the city to its operations. And so if you have not already done so, I encourage you to place an order with us or find some of those materials on your own. If you do order from the city, we have a discounted rate for you. So I encourage you to use that resource. The other item in front of you is an emergency supply kit, three-month calendar list. One of the things that can be overwhelming is where do I start? It can feel very difficult to even get this process on the road, so to speak. And so the three-month supply kit gives you a nice accessible sort of checklist. Both of the, these items can be found on the city's website. And I encourage you to go visit the city's website for more information. The last item in front of you is a handout, which summarizes some of the things that I'm going to tell you about that the emergency management program and risk management have been undertaking during Preparedness Month. And so that resource both has the video that you just saw as well as some upcoming events. But before I get to that, I just want to highlight some things we've been doing, both in advance of kicking off National Preparedness Month as well as during the month. So the City of Eugene is actively engaged in updating its Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is a joint plan with the City of Springfield. It identifies natural hazards that will or are plaguing our communities and identifies mitigation efforts that both municipalities can undertake. It's important because after those hazards come to fruition, FEMA requires that you had an approved plan before you're able to request reimbursement dollars. And so we are actively engaged in updating that plan. And one of the things that emergency management in both cities has really done differently, this go-round versus other years, is it's looked for creative and accessible ways to engage the public with identifying hazards as well as hearing from the public what hazards they want us to be working on. And so to demonstrate the commitment to a different approach, emergency management attended Public Works Day, where they asked students from all over the city to let them know what projects they thought emergency management should be focusing on. And this is really important when we think about resiliency for a community as well as sort of preparing now for the hazard that's to come later. And when we think about getting children engaged today, I think it can be a good example that our generation and the generation ahead of me are less likely to talk about go-kits routinely. We want the generation behind us to routinely talk about go-kits. And the way in which we achieve that is to engage them early and regularly in the process. And so at Public Works Day, students were able to vote in a very interactive and fun and non-threatening way which hazards they think that we should be working on. So that was the first really different approach. And we got some positive feedback from our FEMA region director around that. On July 28th, the Cities of Springfield and Eugene both co-hosted a Disaster in the Park Fair, where they did some public outreach in a very similar style, engage the public around topics that, what is it that you'd like the cities to jointly be working on with regard to natural hazards now and into the future? And then really recently, I hope you saw this in the media, on August 31st, before Natural Preparedness Month kicked off and sort of to gain some momentum, we had this disaster movie in the park. It was a really interesting approach to natural hazard mitigation, planning, outreach, and education. And FEMA was all over it. It was on their Twitter feed, it's on their website. They tweeted, I think, three times from the event. Community members were able to watch the movie San Andreas and were engaged interactively at parts of the movie that weren't accurate, which was really fun. And again, it's achieving that, like, accessible emergency preparedness in a non-threatening but regular and routine way. And again, you know, trying to get a different generation to think about preparedness and resiliency. So that happened on August 31st to kick off the event. Other preparedness efforts for the month of September included a Cascadia tabletop exercise as well as a talk at the Eugene Public Library around how prepared are you? With a short showing of the unprepared video that OPB featured a year or so ago. There were approximately 50 community members who attended. It was a really great opportunity for the community to receive information about Cascadia as well as to review some items for purchase. So that was on September 11th. September 13th, we had a supplier fair at the Lane County Event Center. And then on September 19th, I hope you attended the Park Blocks Vendor Fair, where there were a variety of preparedness items for purchase. Many of our partners were there doing outreach efforts as well. So that was a great and well-attended event, thanks to the good weather this year. And then coming up, the 26th, we have See Something, Say Something, which is an opportunity for community members to attend a training really focused on if and when you see something that could be terrorist-related, who and where you should report that information. And we will continue efforts related to that as we head into 2020 and 2021. It's just good community training information. And so that will be upcoming and is also at the Eugene Public Library. And all of that information is contained in your PowerPoint handouts as well. On the 22nd and 23rd, emergency management hosted a Joint Counterterrorism Awareness Workshop, which isn't technically within the confines of National Preparedness Month in the way that we normally think of it. But it is an important foundation that but it is an important foundation that emergency management brought to our community. Over 150 partners from around the county gathered for a workshop hosted by Homeland Security and the FBI to identify gaps related to terrorism events that could happen here in Eugene during a large-scale athletic event or otherwise. It certainly stretched us as a city and our partners, and helped us to solidify good relationships, as well as to work towards closing some of those gaps related to hazards, both during a terrorist incident and otherwise. So that was a very well-attended workshop. And we're actually one of the smallest cities in the country to have ever been selected to receive the training. So I think it was a really wonderful opportunity for all of our partners to attend. We have upcoming tomorrow, still moving strong, full steam ahead into the end of the month with National Preparedness Month, Department Operations Training and Workshop. So that Department Operations Centers, who report into the Emergency Operations Center, which you sort of saw live there in the video, will have some training on how they report and how they collaborate with the Emergency Operations Center during a hazard or incident. It's important that our departments are well-trained in the language we use during a hazard or incident, because of course, we'll have federal and state partners who are supporting us. And so we need to be able to communicate during those events. We are also continuing our efforts related to COOP planning, which is continuity of operations. If departments do not have strong COOP plans, we, as a city, will struggle to get back online following a hazard. So emergency management continues that work. And post the natural, or post-September events, we've got lots of opportunities for the community to get involved, and emergency management continues to seek out partnerships within the community. And one of those upcoming events is in Bethel. EWEB and Bethel will be hosting a Water Distribution Fair on October 6th from 11:00 to 1:00, and EWEB will be handing out three-gallon water jugs for folks who attend. So that's a really great opportunity. Yes, it's after the month of September, but preparedness has no month. So I hope folks will attend in October. And continuing the October theme, the Great Oregon Shakeout, of course, is coming up in October, and I encourage everyone in the community to participate. It's easy this year, it's 10:18, 10:18. So it's October 18th at 10:18 in the morning. And if you're not familiar with the Great American Shakeout, which we call the Great Oregon Shakeout, it's an opportunity to practice your earthquake preparedness, drop cover and hold. You have an opportunity to test your family plan, your organization plan, and you can register online for that activity. So, you know, it encourages preparedness. The more people who register and challenge others to register, we make this, we normalize preparedness. And so I think that's a really important message that we have around emergency management. Finally, Prepare Out Loud is coming back to Eugene. That date has yet to be finalized, but it will be in March. Prepare Out Loud will be a collaborative partnership with the city of Eugene, the American Red Cross, Cascadia Prepared, which is a local nonprofit and 4J School District. And it is an interactive way for community members to understand the science behind Cascadia subduction, as well as a really interactive earthquake-type orientation and training. And so that will be done by Red Cross-trained professionals, and then we'll be working with our partners on space there. So that's something to keep an eye out for in the future, and has received really great reviews. Amazon has, the organization, Amazon, has adopted it as part of its corporate preparedness structure. So I hope that as information comes out related to that, you will attend. And then ongoing efforts that emergency management has, I think it's just important for you to know that in addition to the preparedness outreach we do, our primary focus is around, of course, managing post-hazard and preparing for a hazard. And so some of the important things we're doing with regard to management work is a fuel study. We are working to complete what will be the first fuel study of its kind in the state of Oregon, and will help us to know how much fuel we need and for how long we will need that fuel. So we have estimates, but they're really based on sort of feeling it in the wind, and we'd like something more than that to ensure that our community gets back on its feet as quickly as possible. So we're actively working on that. I mentioned the continuing continuity of operation training that we are offering to city staff, and we believe that's very important, and we'll continue doing that work. We are also doing Department Operations Training, both internally and with our partners. Because while our internal departments will be folding into the EOC, so will our partners, such as the University of Oregon and 4J Schools, Lane County. These will all be really critical players post-large-scale hazard. And so we're working collaboratively with them to ensure we're all using the same language, and we will all achieve the same goal in a method of rowing in the same direction, if you will. So that work continues, and we're really happy about some of the strides we've made with local partners recently. Finally, we're working on, not finally, I will not waste your whole evening with the work that emergency management does, because I could go into tomorrow. But I finally want to highlight the Critical Route Mapping. We were aware that transportation post-Cascadia-type event will be problematic. And that theory was reinforced by ODOT's Roads and Bridges Report that was recently shared. And so emergency management continues to identify critical routes. How will we get folks who are evacuating from Florence and the beaches to Eugene and elsewhere? And how will we get resources from, of course, eastern Oregon to those in need here in the city of Eugene? So we continue that work. I just also want to highlight that our website is an awesome resource for ways that the community can get involved, with things like the Lane Preparedness Coalition, CERT training, the COAD, and countless other resources, either to research how to be prepared, or to just get involved in their community. So thank you so much for caring about preparedness.
Wow. That was quite a report.
Yeah.
Thank you, that was exhaustive and helpful, and a little daunting, because I'm just recognizing I'm not ready. So it's a task for all of us as council to step up and do our thing and get our supplies. Are there any, yes, Chris?
Yeah, thank you, this is really great, wonderful. I'm so glad to see this subject coming back up over again, because it's something we've toyed with for a long time, but I think it's something we need to take much more seriously now, since we are overdue, and it could even just be a weather event. It was great to see the video. I thought it was great to see everybody in their little ICS vests. And why does finance always get gray? I'm up with a better color for finance. And I think one of the things that we can do in terms of getting, rolling this out to folks is to talk about their ability to create sheltering and place strategies for neighborhoods. In other words, should an event happen, one thing you can roll out relatively easily is something you can do within your neighborhood. Get to know your neighbors, so that in the event of a, you know, earthquake, or even a snowstorm or a power outage, you can get together with your immediate neighbors, and you can pool resources and work that way. And I think it's much easier to shelter in those kinds of situations than everybody trying to just be their own person. And a neighborhood is a relative, or even your immediate surrounding neighborhood is a real quick and easy way to kind of assess what your resources are and what's available to you, until you can get greater support. So in addition to these great things, it would be nice if you could start talking about, get to know your neighbors. If something should happen, see your neighbors. Form a little group and, you know, take care of yourselves that way. And, you know, I think that could go a long way towards helping people develop the kind of resilience that you're talking about. The other thing was the ability to coordinate with the business side of resilience. I know that there's a lot of continuity conversations going on in the private sector, and I think it's an issue that larger organizations are very aware of, but many smaller organizations aren't. And so working through the Chamber of Commerce and some of the smaller business organizations to talk about the impact of them on them of continuity and resilience planning, I think could be very helpful. And I think the chambers could be a real helpful way to do that. So those are just a couple of ideas off the top, but I can't tell you how glad I am to see this stuff coming up. This is really important.
So one thing I do want to mention, Counselor, with regard to neighborhoods, I agree, they're critical in our ability to be resilient post-hazard. Emergency management provides Map Your Neighborhood resources, which are free to communities, and do just that. So I encourage folks to use that resource.
Okay, Claire?
Thank you. Thank you for the report and for helping reassure us, to some extent anyway, that folks are doing some good work to prepare for a city response in the case of a serious emergency. I was curious, in some of that planning and thinking about what we've heard, should there be a Cascadia event, are bridges failing? If one of the strategies involves some kind of temporary bridge across the river, some way to ferry across the river, if that's at all included in any of the planning?
So part of the critical transportation planning that emergency management has been engaged in is to identify routes that will be accessible post-Cascadia. There is one route that we believe will be viable. But before we divulge all of that information, we want to be sure that we've collaborated with our partners at ODOT. We do believe, however, there will be at least one crossable bridge following a Cascadia-type event. And so we're working on ensuring that transportation planning in that case will be accessible. But again, I want to hedge that just until...
No, yeah, you don't need to name names, that's okay. But I, yeah, so that's kind of what I wanted to know.
Yes, absolutely.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for that report, and thank you for doing the work. You're keeping people safe before they know they're going to need it, and that's awesome. In the event of a declared disaster, I don't know how better to describe the size of an event, so I'll say that. In the event of a federally declared disaster, what's the role of FEMA in your work?
So the ICS structure is very clear on who's in charge. And so we would have an incident commander in charge until such time as FEMA came in and relieved that ICS. And then we would fall under the federal ICS sort of incident command structure. Given the depth and real quality of our emergency operations plan, it is entirely likely that FEMA would defer to our incident commander, even during an emergency. That was one of the things that really stuck out during the JICTAS training. The FBI and Homeland Security commented that our joint Eugene-Springfield Emergency Operations Plan is among the best that they've seen in the nation, which is saying a lot, because, you know, they've trained in cities like Atlanta and Boston, Nashville, Seattle, LA, et cetera. So I wouldn't say that it's entirely unlikely that they would allow our ICS structure to stay in place. We would make an internal decision about whether we would want that to be the case, however.
That's interesting. That's what I was wondering, because there's always this conversation, I had a while back, around the issue of a very large-scale earthquake and what was needed, for example, with our city hall, because of the fact that if FEMA is going to come in, they're going to be in charge anyway. And, but there, obviously, we've done all of the hard work here, the city government, and with your work, to make sure that we're prepared for that disaster and can respond appropriately at the time. That's good news. Secondarily, just because there's other people watching that might, you know, learn some new bit of information here, there's a couple just random preparedness questions that I have. Can you tell me, do you know, I know EWEB has kind of shifted, I think. Their long-term strategy from second source to multiple water sources in wells, located at schools, for example. Do you know how far out they are for operationalizing that?
So the Bethel event that I mentioned is a joint presentation. It's a ribbon-cutting ceremony for their first well and microgrid that they have made operational. I know they're actively engaged also at one of the 4J elementary schools and hope to be operational very soon as well.
So we're going to see pieces of that develop over time, and it's kind of already starting to be there. You don't have an estimated date of full build-out at all?
I don't, I don't, I'm sorry.
And I had heard this once, so maybe you can help me know if it's true. I have been told that, obviously, in my house, we have several of those EWEB three-gallon jugs of water already sitting aside, and I've got a lot of gallons sitting there. But if, in the event of an emergency, would it be advisable to throw my breaker switch first and shut all the valves on my hot water tank to capture the water in there, if it's like, for in my case, a 50-gallon tank?
My first question is, is your water heater strapped?
Yes.
Okay.
Of course it is. Everything needs coat in my house.
In your foundation, I assume, is strapped as well? So assuming the answer to both of those questions is yes, then, then yes.
That will capture those 50 gallons.
Sure. But I would also encourage you to have other water sources. There can be breaks in groundwater sources that would impact your ability to access that water, so...
I only ask that for those that, you know, might not be fully prepared. Maybe they'll think of that sometime. God forbid they have to, but you understand what I mean.
Don't drink the blue water.
Right, that would be bad.
Yeah.
All right, awesome. And the Shakedown event, no, it's not called that, it's the...
Great American Shakeout, or the Great Oregon Shakeout, yes.
Awesome. That's on the perfect day. It's my birthday. It's also the city manager's birthday.
Agreed that way.
Awesome, we'll do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, that was excellent. Thank you very much, and we are adjourned until 7:30.